Go ahead and call this meeting to order. First meeting is public hearing. By law, we are required to have two of these a year. So I would like to call the public hearing meeting to order and ask for approval of the agenda, please. Thank you, Bruce.
Second.
Thank you, Bill. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carried. Thank you. Public comment on agenda items for the public hearing? None? Moving on to update topics. TIF plan review. Mr. Miller.
Okay. Good morning, everybody. As Kyle mentioned, we have a requirement twice a year under the DDA enabling legislation to go over the TIF plan, allow the members of the public to comment. It's also, we time this in a way, my staff helps time this in a way, that makes, that helps inform you all with the budget process. So we kind of use this as an opportunity to go over some of the budgetary issues. And so it's a good time to review the TIF plan and what we're about, right? So the DDA purpose and our authority are following points here on the screen. So we want to prevent the deterioration of our downtown business district. Of course, we are focused on economic development and growth revitalization. Historic preservation is a very important piece of our work. And then we have the ability to acquire and dispose of property. We have $1,000, $5,000 fund in the DDA to do that work. And then we also, just to note, we have the granted authority by the state finance to bond out money, essentially, and to develop local plans. Also, and this could be important in the future, that that tax increment financing could be a tool that we can use to accomplish other goals. So there's a lot there that this organization, this entity, can accomplish, and we've been delegated that authority by the city. All right. Now, I'm going to spare you the long stuff today, right? We're just going to hit this high level. What's in our TIF plan? And for those of you that worked on developing it, this is old hat, but let's just cover the main pieces. So when you look at the priorities that the DDA board put together, these are it. Riverwalk, US 31 corridor, streetscape, any kind of redevelopment opportunities through land acquisition and redevelopment, facade grants for downtown buildings, marketing, events, you know, what do we do with our advertising dollars? And then, of course, we have administrative costs. That's all in the TIF plan. All right. I said this is high level, that means small print. Just so you know, this is the TIF plan budget overview. Please consider this plan as aspirational. Bottom line is, we do not have enough money to accomplish all of these thoughts, but the plan was there to kind of give the DDA the flexibility to accomplish some goals. So when you look at these bottom line totals, down there in the bottom corner, it says 63, or excuse me, 6.3 million. Say it now. 6.3 million of possible TIF revenue projected, and the plan comes in with a $9.5 million scope of work, right? So this is $9.5 million worth of ideas, and at best, at best, and probably aspirational as well, there's $6.3 million worth of revenue for the life of the 20-year plan. So all of those things we mentioned are in here. There are certain dollar figures, but since they're aspirational, we're not going to dive into them. We just know that we have the ability to do the work. Okay. That is a review of the TIF plan. Any thoughts, discussion, or adjustments? So, you know, just keep in mind that we want you to be thinking about these things as we're doing our duty, our diligence as board members.
Mark, just a quick question. So projected TIF revenue, is that monies that are already allocated towards this, or is there possible more grants or funding that we can reach out to, to help get to that $9 million?
That was a projection of what monies, revenues will be coming in through the TIF capture.
Okay.
Right. So that was a projection, what's coming in in the next 20 years for DDA, how could they spend the money, right? Again, caveat, it's aspiration. The $9.5 million, that gives everyone the leeway to approval, authority from the city to do $9.5 million worth of work. That $3 million gap kind of gives you the impression that we have the authority to go out and get grants and other financing, right? So your question's a good one, but it's kind of rolled up in there in the numbers. But the answer is, we might get $6.3 million over 20 years. We have ideas for $9.5 million worth of work. Figure it out, right? Tyler?
Yeah, so that number, I was just going to say, is your annual budgets totaled up over the life of the TIF plan? And what the TIF plan allows you to do is, if it's stated in that plan, we have the authority to do it. Secondly, I would say, if you look at the TIF projections that were approved back in 2020, the annual budget already exceeds where we would have been 20 years from now. So I think those projections are extremely conservative.
Dock installation maintenance, what is that? I guess I didn't realize, what's dock installation or install?
So there was, in the TIF plan, there was the, for grants, like the facade grants to, for people to add docks on the, you know, because that's part of orientating the downtown into the river.
Sure. But we wouldn't own?
No, it would be the grant to private businesses.
All right. Okay. I was going to say, well, I don't want to give them that.
And the other thing for board members to consider is, when you look at the rental rehab program, it's going to be matching dollars. You can say, well, that could be 30% of the project, or something like that, 10% of the project, whatever it is. So the increase in investment from what the DDA can do is much more significant.
In the downtown decorations, are we talking like holiday decorations?
Yeah. Holiday decorations.
I mean, that's a lot, it seems like.
Add it up over 20 years.
Yeah. It looks fairly conservative to me, too.
Anything else for Mark? Okay. Moving on to budget status and analysis. Carmen?
Thanks, Mark.
Okay. Good morning, everyone. I'm just going to talk kind of high level, just making sure that kind of everyone has a clear idea of where we are at for budget versus actual, we're kind of at the halfway point in the year. We're going to be beginning the discussion for the budget likely in January. So I kind of just kind of wanted to go over kind of some of the line items, and give you thinking for the budget process meeting in January and February. We will be looking at the 2024, 2025 budget that we need to get approved and finalized by June, so that way we can kick off the year in July of 2024. Couple things that I did want to mention to you. Everybody should have a copy of the budget in front of them. Please let me know if you do not, although I do have it on the screen here. One thing to point out is, we still have the downtown dollar program out there. There are certificates out there where we do have certificates expiring that were sold in 2020 that expired in December 31st of 2025. So ultimately, we have to kind of wait and draw those funds. But since then, we've implemented the managed accounted cash program. And just some interesting data that I'd like to share with you, that there were about eight, about $9,000 that were spent in the downtown alone this year from the managed accounted cash program. There were about, no, $11,000 that was issued in this year, this calendar year alone, so January through today. So just kind of interesting to know that, you know, there are people purchasing the managed accounted cash program, and they are spending the dollars locally. And then just from the start of the program, which was implemented in 2020, there are a total of $37,000 that are out there yet to be captured. So it's just a matter of people getting out there and spending those dollars. So just wanting to kind of share where you guys, where we're at with that. And then the revolving loan, we have Jamie Cantlet, she's going to be coming to pretty much an end point. Her loan is scheduled to be completed in February timeframe, springtime of 2024. Also, in the advertising budget, we've spent dollars this year for the radio campaign and then also for the social district. So you'll notice that we have, you know, some dollars left over that we can spend, and I think the goal is to spend those dollars on the rest of the social district plan. And then we have the downtown decoration, which you can see here, the downtown, which Tyler mentioned earlier, that the flower planters, winter decoration goes into that line item. Also, you will see here, I do have a quote from Wheezy's, everybody has a copy in front of them, to decide if you want to do springtime flowers and hanging baskets before Memorial Day weekend. So that is something that we will have to think about, and if we want to go ahead and move forward with that, it is in the budget. So it's just, you know, a matter of just getting that approved. Also, in addition, the audit was completed and finalized. Everybody should have a copy, we're handing them out now. We did have a clean audit this year, there were no concerns. Careful to take a look at it, and you're pleased. Couple other items, just a couple of other things that I wanted to bring up, you know, the engineering feed, we were a little bit over this year, not by much, but just to kind of think about where we are as far as the budget. And then, of course, you know, Tyler mentioned, you know, he thought that we were being a little bit conservative with the TIF revenue. So I encourage that, you know, that is a conversation that we have in the budget discussion meeting moving forward for next year, and how do we want to spend those dollars? And also thinking about the streetscape plan, how do we find out those dollars, and what does that look like for the future year? One thing that I just want to mention, something for you guys to think about is, in January, I will be scheduling a meeting, a special meeting, to discuss the 2024, 2025 budget and streetscape. Otherwise, I'd like to have your input to see if we want to make those two separate meetings, just because they're so, the streetscape is such a heavily involved meeting. I don't know if you want that to be a completely separate meeting where we're intensely talking about that topic, and then we have another meeting for the budget. So I welcome your input, otherwise, we can combine the two and hash both of them out. And that will be a separate meeting from the regular DDA meeting in January. So be on the lookout for a do not poll from me on that. Do you guys have any questions for me regarding the budget, the information, questions, concerns? This is a good chance for you guys to speak up for Evan and I, who do P. So other than that, I am all set.
Nice job, Carmen. Thank you. Okay. Moving on to item five, 2024, 2025 budget priorities.
So at a high level, just want to start us to thinking about what we spend money on and how you are going to propose a budget to the city with those priorities. So just to wrap your head around what those are, administrative cost, city services agreement, which you rolled that all into administrative cost. We spend money on facade grants, design projects. You also have the streetscape to consider. And I believe that the last piece of this is advertising. So this past year, as you recall, an agreement was made with Eagle Radio to supplement local advertising dollars so that businesses could put ads on the air and encourage people downtown, especially while the detour was causing, hat, causing transportation distress. So that, those are the main buckets. As a board, you can create another bucket, and I think there are many tools, there are things in the TIF plan, there are tools that you have with the DDA, you can create a whole other bucket. But you should be thinking about the work that we've been doing, how we're going to project out into the, into the streetscape plan and tackle that project, what that might look like. So as Tyler pointed out, we underestimate our budget revenues. Now, those revenue projections are given to us by the city, and we, I think we haven't done full analysis of this, but it kind of looks like it's at least 10% lower than what we actually take in. So we have 10% more money. And last year, to kind of get a handle on that, we, for the first time, introduced a concept, we inflated the revenue projections by 3%. So we started to handle that and try to address that. It's really clear that we could probably go higher. But, so, truth in budgeting is important, and, you know, if we want to take a less conservative approach, we certainly can suggest that to the city. And, you know, I see Bill nodding over there. I don't want to give a far field of Bill, but that's a way to do it.
I think, if I could, just, I think it's important, if we do have higher revenue, there are assumptions made when we did the TIF plan about it's going to increase X amount a year in terms of revenue. It's been kind of a crazy couple of years, but the good news is, so you talk about bonding, if we determine the scope of the streetscape project, probably bond, the city would do the bond, and then the, whatever revenues you have, you could allocate that for the bond payment every year. So that's kind of the important part, is if the, if we have more revenues than we thought, which is good, because then we could afford a bigger project. So I just want to mention that.
And I'm glad you did. The next piece of the discussion, though, is to just to kind of get you to think about, what we've heard from the city's bond council in the past, is that we have roughly $1.25 to $1.5 million worth of authority. We may actually have more, as Bill stated, and so we need to do some analysis and work with the city on that. But when you look at the streetscape plan, we'll do that later, there's a lot of things that you could spend money on.
Could I make one comment about this? 10% is a big number to be wrong. So I'd like to dig a little bit at the assumptions that were made in that number and make sure that we get the right footnotes, so that when we do our planning, you know, we're, you know, informed whether this is a one-time thing, whether this was a surprising property tax base increase. It's, you know, we need to know that, because that 10%, over 10 years, is a huge number.
Karen and I were actually talking about that before the meeting. Likely, just assuming here, your properties down there might have been the difference in causing this.
The three, the three new houses?
Because all of those taxes go to the DDA, none of them, because that's all an increase in tax. So that would be my assumption of why.
And the turnover in some of the existing buildings, I mean, economic development program is, you've seen some purchases of the Music Vault, it's changed hands several times on the old senior center, now the outsider restaurant. There's been some others, you know, there's some land contract ones that don't, I don't think really is captured. But, you know, you, you see that, that, you know, all of these things that we're working on are increasing the TIF revenues, which is the goal. I mean, that's, that's the goal. But we probably do need to do a further analysis.
Well, the TIF projections don't really include a lot, like, growth. It's mostly 2% to 3% increases each year. So if we're doing our jobs properly, we should far exceed that, because our job is to grow the DDA, right?
All good information to have for the budget work session.
Yeah. And staff hasn't done any analysis on this, right? And we kind of talked about it.
Well, that's one of the reasons I said it, because I don't want staff responsible for inflating or deflating that number. I want, you know, where the experts are in the city to be, you know, responsible for footnoting that and adjusting it.
Bill, when would the city anticipate letting out the bond for the streetscape?
And it depends when we decide on a scope.
Maybe in the next fiscal year, do you think?
I think we've always been trying to have it in the next fiscal year. We finally have in front of us, so we have the catalog, we need to pick it and pick the right scope, and then I think, yeah, it would be as soon as possible.
I was curious, because if we didn't have a bond next year, there will, little wiggle room there.
Just, we could report on this later, but we did put in the form to the Treasury Department that would allow us to bond next, next calendar year. So that was a requirement, and Bradford from the city helped us a little bit on the numbers, but we did turn in that. Carmen, correct, we turned it in, or we had a sign?
Where I'm at with that form is, I completed it, and it's being reviewed by Ed Bradford, and then he pulled someone else in to, as they were figuring out the form. So we're super close to getting that final.
Thank you. Okay.
And if I may, however, just as far as budget priorities, I think I had some good discussions with the Tourism Authority and Brandon Jensen about some of the things about the streetscape, or the streetscape, but also the Riverwalk, and we'll talk a little bit about an easement later, but just those opportunities where we're creating a new switchback, kind of having an entrance and having different things telling people that, hey, there's, there's something going on down at the Riverwalk. Seeing that line item for the Riverwalk facade and deck grants, I think that's one that hasn't necessarily been the top line, but I know we talk about facade grants, but doing more business access to the Riverwalk, making sure that's kind of a whole separate good experience for someone, I think that should be a priority. And we did commit to that with that EDA grant about having more, having this grant fix up the Riverwalk, but then also being able to get more money to make business frontage down there was something we, it's needed for reporting to the EDA grant. It's also in line with the DDA goals, and it's going to make that a better project, so.
Sorry, I haven't really looked at the Riverwalk plans yet. I don't know if they exist, but way back when we had walked the Riverwalk and pointed out a number of spots for additional seating and some coverage, I'm still very interested, and I think having more seating in the Riverwalk would help a lot as well, especially with the social districts.
I think with the EDA thing, EDA grant, there's been a lot of, a lot of work that's done on that, so we could get caught up on that as well.
So there's, we have a weekly meeting, I can invite you to that if you'd like to.
Weekly?
Well, it's just a, yeah, Thursday morning meeting, but if you have a couple ideas, I'd love to hear them.
Thanks, Bill. Let's move on to public comment for the public hearing. Okay. Any further comments from board members on the public hearing? All right, I would entertain a motion to adjourn.
Make a motion.
Bruce, second from Bill. Got that, Carmen? Blade, sorry. All in favor?
Aye.
Okay. Moving on to our regular meeting, thank you, Mark, for that. Carmen, I'll go ahead and call a regular meeting to order and ask for approval of the agenda.
I'll make that motion.
Motion from Karen.
Second.
Second from Bruce. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carried. Thank you. Public comment on agenda items, I think you'll have another opportunity at the, at the end of the meeting. None? Thanks for being here. Moving on to item four, approval of minutes from the November meeting.
I have one change, I'll change the letter to defacing public property or.
And where is that, Tyler?
So that would be under the sidewalk section information.
Which, which section?
That would actually be.
C?
New business C.
7C.
With that.
You want to just.
The motion to.
So you want that change from litter to what?
Defacing public property and graffiti, I don't know which exactly.
Okay. Okay. And then, did you make a motion to approve the minutes? Okay.
As amended.
Okay.
Second.
Thank you, Bruce. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carried. Approval of financials from November 2023, please. Any questions for Mark or Carmen on financials, or expenses, sorry?
When would we approve the flowers? I guess would that be now, flowers?
We can do it now, just so that way I can communicate with them and they can plan and get that order in.
Okay.
So, yeah, we can certainly approve that now, so that way we can move on for in the next year. So if you guys are interested in having planters and hanging baskets next year before the Memorial Day weekend, I would need approval for that.
My only concern there would be that we want to make sure that they're maintained, and we haven't discussed maintenance for next year yet. So I'm happy to entertain a motion to approve it, but maybe we could discuss it at the next meeting if we're not in a hurry, when we, when we talk about budget and maintenance and stuff like that.
So we're talking about who's watering?
Yeah, sorry. Okay.
In planters. Is it the city that does the watering on the light poles?
Well, they have been.
Yeah.
But this was, this is for everything.
Okay.
A quote for, for hanging and planted, correct?
Okay. So I'm confused, are we going to talk about it or wait till the budget meeting?
We're going to wait.
Okay.
Well, today, what's our deadline, though, for them to order them?
As long as I'm in communication with them, they have a pretty good idea of, you know, what we've done. I mean, I've ordered them in January, February in the past, and they've been fine.
Okay.
So as long as I give them an update and just let them know what our timeline is, we should be okay.
Okay.
Is there a motion to approve expenses?
I like that motion.
Motion from Bruce.
Second.
Second from Tyler. Any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carried. Executive Director Report. Mark Miller.
So we'll just keep this at a high level. The economic development program continues to turn along. We did have a little bit of a downturn in, in metrics and contact, contracts because of the holidays, but a significant amount of work on Northern Hotel, we worked on the County Land Bank Light Elimination Program grant with them, they're applying with that program that just was put in a few days ago. I know the city wrote letters of support, Chamber wrote one on behalf of the DDA, the Chamber and the EDC, so we got three letters in. Thank you, Blade, for doing that work, putting up with me to get that done. And we've had some discussions about. me to get that done, and we've had some discussions about some BREs with several of our restaurants downtown, so it's a good, a good month for that, but certainly because of holidays and whatever, we've seen some, are fewer numbers than normal. On the administration side, I, I think you can get a sense that we're doing a lot of work on a number of priorities for the, for the board, and that has taken up time, so we've been, we've been spending a lot of time on DDA work, but we, we're, we're looking at many of the budget things and preparing for these upcoming decisions, so.
Any questions for Mark? Okay, moving on to ad hoc committee reports, facade grants.
Turn the meeting over to me at this length.
Right.
So on the facade grants, we have received the, the grant agreement from MEDC, and we have paperwork to do, we have been meeting with the five sub-grantees for the facade restoration initiative grant, we're trying to get the numbers from them on how much the work is going to take, we will turn in a form by the end of the month, which says this is the amount of money that each project will take, and this is the amount to match, et cetera, so we're working through that, and it falls on the administration side of things, and we will then be able to start seeing dispersment from MEDC after we, after we accomplish that. We've been telling people that we need to have their numbers in, and we're almost there, but we, we have given them the realistic timeline, they don't have to spend out the money until 2026, so I think that's given them some comfort, they don't have to rush, 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 but anyway, so that's where we're at with this. I still don't have my crystal ball yet clear enough to tell you that we can do another round of facade grants with the money we've already spent in this current fiscal year, so we're on hold for that plan, if we do get an opportunity, we'll, we'll try to do that before the end of June, we may have to wait until the next fiscal year to do another round of facade grants, some of the projects, one of the projects has come in quite a bit higher than, than we had originally thought, so, what we originally planned for, so the commitment is to get those projects done first and then have extra money, so we'll, we'll, we'll work through that, but that's where we're at with that one, and I'll, we'll keep you updated on, on progress, but we have some paperwork to do this month. Let me go ahead and jump into-
Streetscape?
So, yeah. Well, we now have the big plan, we have a draft plan, and we've put some of this up So you all have this, we gave this to you last week, it's a lot of reading, so we're going to take more time to, to complete it, but we, we have some really significant ideas here, I'll come back to this slide in a minute. So I want to stick on goals and objectives, there's a lot of work in here, and when you think about all the different ways that they're suggesting that we can spend the money, we are going to have to, have to think about what we're going to pick, what are the things we're going to do first, we don't have, I mean, this is a plan that can, can guide our work for many years to come, so we can pick a few things and then move forward, but when you look at the overall suggestions, you've got very simple things like weight finding signage, you've got the access points to the Riverwalk, making them more attractive, there were some concepts in there for ADA accessibility, like an elevator and a, and observation deck, again aspirational, Riverwalk improvements, streetscape improvements, curbless, curbless streets, you have the park at the end, two parks at the end near the marina, there's a proposal in there for taking traffic on the Pine Street to get on the water and creating a public space in that area around the fountain, so the street's actually now, are now a, a newer park, so all of those things are in the streetscape plan, and there's a lot of really great ideas, a lot of visuals on what that might look like, and one thing that I want to stress is in there, is that the Michigan Transportation Code requirements are in there about where you can, how to protect pedestrian safety, we are not up to code here in, in our downtown district, and so one of the things that they have in there is how to adjust that so that we can make sure that people can walk across the street and that we're not crowding those intersections, so those are some of the pieces that are in there. They've done a good deal of work, we, the committees worked with them, we've worked with them quite well, our next step is to review this plan and get any revisions back to them, so I would ask the board to review the plan, and if you see something that's a, that doesn't quite sit right with you, or needs some adjustment, I've found a typo once so far, so that's, that's good, but we, we want to ask for your help in that.
Mark, when you say review, what are, are we looking for mistakes, or what are we looking, what are we looking for?
No, I want you all to think about big picture stuff, if you would, please, so, you know, do we want to suggest that a certain idea is slightly different? That's what I-
So this isn't their final?
This is not a final draft.
Okay.
I mean, this is a draft.
Okay, that's what I'm trying to-
And they're waiting on us to finalize.
Okay, all right.
So, you know, so if, within reason, right, we can't completely rewrite sections, but within reason, you know, is there something that you'd like to have added, subtracted, you know, there might be-
Or more, more clarity?
More clarity, perhaps?
And, and just to remind everyone, we had them do a parking and a traffic study as well, so.
For, for example, in the setup for this, they, they talked about the city being deficient with their downtown, do we want to change that language and make it a little softer?
What is, what does that mean?
Um, they're talking about transportation and pedestrian stuff, they were saying that we were deficient, or we viewed ourselves as being deficient, I read that, and like, I don't think we're deficient, I just think we need an update, right? So I mean, is that something that, if we had a problem with, we change that language a little bit, and make it a little softer, you know, those kinds of things.
I guess, I guess if they're pointing something out that's, that's probably serious to the welfare of our pedestrians, I'm not going to go soft on it.
Correct.
So we have to balance that, we have to recognize that we are not meeting some standards, how do we fix that?
What's our timeline on needing to get back to Fleyce and Vanderbrink?
It's an open, open end, and so, you know, I, I, I ideally would have liked to maybe, you know, ideally we could have finalized it today, but we're not there, I mean, we don't have enough time, so let's give ourselves another month and finalize suggestions, and then we can send it back to them after next month's meeting.
Do you want feedback in the meantime, or do you want to wait until the board meeting to give you feedback?
No, do it ahead of time, so individually, report to staff if you see anything that you want to see changed, we'll try to do our best at consensus building if there's any conflicts.
Don't copy everybody on the-
Don't copy everybody, thank you.
How many people can gather to meet about this at one time legally?
Less than a four.
So, yeah, so we're, we're going to stay within the rules here, but, no, I-
Well, you have that ad hoc group that met, we should start this, so.
We could meet.
At TJ's tonight?
Sure.
So what's a lot of date for board members to get stuff back to you?
All right, why don't, thank you, Bill, Bill's strength corral me in here, I appreciate that a great deal.
It helps to have a deadline.
It does help. Why don't we say January 3rd?
Thank you.
For when deadline?
To get, to staff on, on the land, and then we'll, we'll pull that together, and then by the next meeting, which I think is the 13th, or, then we'll, we'll have a, have a final move forward. In the meantime, if the committee wants to meet and discuss anything and talk to Fleyce and Vanderbrink again, we can certainly put that, put that in.
Bring it to your, bring it to your New Year's Eve party.
Thank you, Mark. Anything else?
There's some exciting things, there's an ice rink that potentially go down by the river.
Yeah.
So there's just a lot of fun things in there that, and I think the board should get excited about, sorry.
Yeah, it'd be great if everybody could take some time and pick it upon, stands out, yeah, aside from correcting errors, wanting to add it, what really gets you motivated, wanted to, want us to do.
How much would you do as the ad hoc committee?
None, I have none.
I just don't want to start giving my input, people have been working on it.
No.
Yeah, let's not do it publicly yet, but any input is, I think, helpful.
Oh.
Are we still on streetscape?
No.
Okay, so we're moving on to social district and events, if there is anything from Karen, what is going on, Karen?
Just haven't done anything.
If I couldn't, I, I know it's been a crazy couple months for me, but I, we can talk, but I think we also, the Slay Bell, the RRCA is no longer going to be the fiduciary, so the mayor's wanted to maybe have an ad hoc committee for the city to look at how we handle events in general, there's a couple people here I need to talk to about if they want to be involved, but I think it's to make recommendations, to make sure that, you know, can the city be more involved, can the DDA contribute, do we want to do what we talked about a couple of years ago about contributing for an events person, and I just think it's time to, we're having a couple signature events, well, Slay Bell being one of them where it's in flux, and I know they've talked about setting up a 501(c)(3) the committee.
For at least a decade.
Yes.
Okay, well, that puts it in perspective.
We've been pushing them for, have birth.
Well, I, I think an event like this that impacts the city-
And it was a great turn.
Yeah, especially something that impacts the city that much when it comes to traffic, it's important that it's, I think it's important that it's at a little bit higher level managed.
I'd really like to see an RFP or something put out by a group of organizations in, in the city, like the Tourism Authority, the DDA, and get a company in or an individual that would manage the events and make it, run events that charge Hops and Props made money, so they could run multiple events, they could be very successful, and we could have a base pay for that, I think it's very valuable.
Sounds like those things are in the hopper.
Yep.
Thanks, Bill.
So, before we move off, if we can, before we move off events, Bill, I would just make a, a request that we meet, the events committee does meet again, the downtown merchants are very interested in doing a frostbite event the weekend of February 18th, which is our event, we've already met about it, we've kind of, or continuing talks about it, so this is where we kind of need to have that, that platform book that we talk about, like, this is how you do it, this is who you go to for these.
Karen, who is on the ad hoc committee for social district and events?
Us three and Bill.
Okay, so, meet.
Yeah.
At TJ's.
Yeah.
Tonight at TJ's.
Slay Bell's over, we're kind of all waiting for that busy time.
Yeah, I know.
For us to put an, an event together, some of this information would be really helpful if we're going to do it for February 18th.
If we, if, if we can all look at our schedules, like, right after?
Yeah.
Okay, good, thanks.
So it's Karen, Lindsay, Deanna, and Bill?
Yeah.
Okay.
And I do have one, I guess you could say kind of announcement for events, I did meet with a gentleman from the Century Boat Club, and they are looking to have a boat and car show September 14th, so it would have been right around the time Hops and Props was, and we are going to kind of partner with them and make like a weekend out of it, and do another block party either on that Friday, the 13th, or on that Saturday also, we're kind of trying to coordinate with, they do a big dinner with their group with the Century Boat Club, so trying to coordinate with when they want to have that, and then, so those people could also attend the block party. Jamie Catlett is in charge of the car portion, I think her husband has some really good contacts for car, car shows, so she's kind of, you know, she's, I'm sure going to be coming to us or the city on where to close off the street to have the cars, I think they're just trying to get a number on how many cars they would expect, so that should be, that should be a good weekend.
Can I, let me, just have one thing on that too.
Sure.
Look, the farmer's market, is that still like the senior center?
Mm-hmm.
Love to see that, and like, by the marina, and where you're talking about creating that park, I think that'd be a lot better location, but just-
I think John is doing a really great job right now with his market, and I think that's his, I don't want him to speak and say that, but in our conversations, he has, and, what's the word, he has plans, there you go, of doing market kind of things in his parking lot.
Is that this building over here, or what?
That's the outsider, so he's already done the Christmas market.
Oh, yeah.
Um, he's, did I say the right name, John?
You said-
Mark.
You said John, did you mean Brian?
Outsider.
John Faber.
Yeah, yeah, there we go, and he's, he's done the Christmas market, and then he did the fall market over there, so I want to say he's on-
No, I love what they're doing out there.
Yeah, so if he's got a market going out, we wouldn't want to step in.
I think the farmer's market would benefit, um, with more activity and everything down there, and I think it comes to farmer's market, too.
Yeah, I want to say that's kind of his plan, but we'd have to talk to him, we wouldn't want to step on that, but I think that's a great idea to have something down at that end, for sure.
Okay, old business. I don't know if this is old or new, but I did submit a letter to the city manager, Bill, for the renegotiation of our city services contract, so that is official, and we did meet once and had some initial discussions and some good ideas, so we will be back with you, or I'll be back with you soon on scope, and looking for some input.
So we'll meet again soon, and yeah.
Yeah. Any old business? New business?
This could be under both, but, so there are part of, so the EDA Riverwalk grant is a federal grant, in order to spend public funds, it has to be public property, or we have to have a permanent easement in one of the area, and digging through, you know, the 90s, we found, you know, we, we basically have, you know, most of them, so, but there's a couple spots in the DDA that we don't have a permanent easement, and we're getting to the point now where, you know, we need to submit it to the EDA, they have to approve it, our attorney had to review it with the engineers, they determined there were a couple that we didn't have, one of them was the DDA switchback area, and in order not to have any issues with getting reimbursed, it's better if we just have a Riverwalk easement there, another one was the now-
And, Bill, just to clarify, the switchback area, that's the parking lot that we own next to Dick's Barber Shop.
Yep, so that's actually going to be a bigger repair there, there was some, there was a bit of a horizontal load that was kind of shifting, and if you can tell, there's some- can tell, there's some, anyway, we're going to put sheet piling, so it's, this is kind of the bigger repair we're hoping to get done with this grant. But, we're trying to alleviate that horizontal load with sheet piling in strategic 50-foot span. But, in order to do that, we need this easement. The other easement that we were waiting on was the Westshore Community College, so in the priorities for the TIF plan, you saw that we're supposed to spend $250,000 doing an art park down here. So, what that's turned into, it kind of passes around, working with them, looked at a couple of different things, but we're adding an observation deck with a walk basically off that parking lot. There's going to be low maintenance plantings, there's going to be a, an area where there's kind of a flex space, and you can sit to get out of the rain. And then we're going to be doing, working with the Tourism Authority about adding some more of the origin type pieces and showcasing, you know, the different industries that help the area. So, there's going to be one down here over in that circle area. So, just to give you an idea, but I think I had some ideas about how to set this up, but ultimately, I left it to the college to work with Spicer to come up with a plan that they wanted to do. There was potentially going to be a switchback here as well. The topography was very challenging. I talked to the EDA, and they agreed since we're doing one near the Marina that we weren't obligated to do one here. So, that was a huge burden taken off of us. So, I'm asking the DDA to approve. There's easement language that was sent out. It's in line with the other easements. I did pass counsel on December 5th. I had a contingent on final city attorney approval, so the DDA wants their attorney to look at it, and then they can kind of work out some minor details with our attorney. We just need to get that in because the EDA needs six weeks to review it. We want to have the bids out in January, so we're kind of finalizing a lot of those things, but we have to have construction start in March, so we're kind of getting to the final step before this gets bid out. So, are there any questions, or?
Is the easement to the city?
It is, yep. So, there's a grantor and a grantee, and the DDA's granting it to the city. And we take on liability, there's, it's in the documents, but yes. It's in line with the other ones.
So, who has the easement, not the DDA?
There's no easement there.
No.
Just the DDA owns it.
Oh, okay.
So, and we just, you could, I mean, that was kind of a...
Does that mean that the city's taking over maintenance responsibilities 100% there?
Well, we can't, and I guess the big thing is the, we can't, potentially, it could be a problem with reimbursement if we don't have this easement, and we'd rather not take the risk, we just want to get it fixed, but...
You need a motion on that?
But, you know, it's funny, the Riverwalk maintenance was one of our discussion topics, so.
And that falls to what I always say, it's like, sometimes I just get nervous when we start adding on stuff, you know? We all would love a lot of stuff, but what the city can handle is a whole different story. So, I always kind of get cautious about, okay, we'd love to add all these things, but will the city be able to take care of it? That is an important point.
This needs to happen, so...
Yeah, and this is an example of us taking care of an issue there, so I guess, I just want to put that in perspective.
Bill, do you need a vote on an easement?
Yes.
Okay.
I'll make the motion.
So, Tyler's making a motion. Will you...
To approve the...
Okay. This is, you have a...
Hold on, we have a motion. Is there a second?
Second.
Okay, second for Bruce, so discussion on the motion.
Okay. You have a document that needs to be signed here. So, aren't we going to approve this, the signing of an easement agreement?
I don't have a document.
Is that what this is?
Yeah, that's the...
Yeah.
Second.
But, yeah, there's an easement document.
Now, we add an updated board comment.
This is Exhibit A, but okay.
My motion is still approved, that's the agreement.
Thank you.
And so, you could have, and who is the DDA's counsel right now? Is it Micah Myers, or do you have a separate?
Yeah.
Same. Okay. Okay. So, I guess, and there's, you know, I think, I saw in this version, there's a 2022, so we'll just kind of make sure it gets a final review, and then when appropriate, have the chairman sign.
Okay.
Yep. Your motion allows the chair to sign as the city puts it together. I'll second that.
Well, Bruce already seconded.
Oh, you seconded. That was like two minutes ago.
Okay. Any further discussion? Okay. Hearing none? All in favor?
Aye.
opposed?
Thank you.
Thank you.
Under new business, I just, since you brought that up, I want to make a comment, and I don't know how to handle this because we don't own a lot of property, but on the southwest and southeast corners of that property, there are two trees that, in my opinion, are way overgrown that need to be removed. And, we don't have to decide on that now, but I think they're beyond their size for what they should be in a downtown area. They're messy trees, and they will start to cause damage to the area soon. So, I think we should consider removing those.
And just to, want to add, so there's, there's overgrown evergreens in some of those beds over by the Marina, and then the spruce, spruce where spruce hits the Riverwalk, there's kind of overgrowth there. I had Jeff get quotes to have those removed. So, I think, I think the DDA with something like that, I mean, we're going to talk about maintenance, but, you know, they can very easily get quotes as well and go to take those out.
Okay.
So, it's my thought on that.
Yeah.
But, those are on, those are not on, we don't have the property, those are property owners, but if it, if it impedes the Riverwalk...
No, these trees are on our property.
Oh, okay.
Yeah, they're on, they're in the parking lot area.
Oh, all right. Okay.
Close to the road.
All right. Yep. Right there by the building.
So, just think about that for the budget. Public comment?
I just have a quick comment.
Hold on. You're not public.
I'm not public. I'm a board member comment. Public comments?
Okay. Board member comment. Go ahead, Dee.
Thank you. So, I was going to look up the exact date, but I want to say it was two weeks ago. I just want to make a comment that I believe by Councilmember Pratt, that he stated that the DDA board was unhappy with our city contract. And I just want to be very careful when those comments are made. I don't believe that's the consensus of the DDA, and I would like to see that comment retracted, but I really wanted to say publicly, if comments are going to be made by board members, that perhaps maybe they come here and make sure that that's the right consensus, the right feeling of the DDA as a comment, I just want to say that I don't believe that was ever expressed by the DDA.
Thank you.
I'll try to read them.
Yeah, I think there's a difference between, it's everything we keep talking about. It's like, well, first off, that contract negotiation was long and very detailed, and it really wasn't, it was difficult. But, it's everything we keep saying, it's like, as we add and as we do things, we just have to constantly keep in our head, I want all these great things, but if they're not going to be taken care of, if we can't manage them, and that's not, it's not the fault of the city, I'm just trying to say, we have to recognize what our limits are, too, and when we keep pushing past those boundaries, things aren't going to get done. And then people are going to get frustrated and upset.
You have expectations, you have capacity, so it's just kind of be realistic with some of those things.
I also did hear a comment made about, and I thought it was taken negatively, that I talked to Kyle a little bit about this, about the plowing of the streets. That was something that years ago and stuff, that's a positive for our downtown. And, we've talked about, you know, owners are responsible for that, and many times I went out and shoveled, but...
Sidewalks.
Yeah, the sidewalks. That is, to me, it's been a, it's been a very good service for the DDA to help out subsidizing or helping out with that for the property owners. You know, it's different.
Sure. I would say that's a very appropriate thing for the DDA to help out with.
Yeah, it's, not that I don't mind juggling and stuff, but it's like when, and this was back when there wasn't every, as occupied, all the buildings weren't as occupied as they are now, but...
Although, the city does plow sidewalks throughout the city, right?
I don't think so.
They have, we've been doing that a little bit, but it's not, not, I mean, it's around schools a little bit, but you're right, it's not, it's not consistent, it's not like every street gets...
Yeah. In the central business...
I've never lived anywhere that they, the city plows residential sidewalks for anybody, but I noticed that when I lived on 8th Street, and the sidewalk doesn't run in front of my old house, and the plow definitely ran across the grass.
I don't know if this is specific to the Central Business District or the DDA District, but it is the responsibility of the property owner to maintain the sidewalks.
This is a perk for everybody.
So, it's a one-time-a-day.
Yep.
If there's snow in the morning, that they, that they move it, especially to be able to remove it.
I would say if the DDA is the only area having sidewalks plowed, it would make sense for the DDA to contribute, but if it's a service that the city's providing to the entire city, then why is the DDA paying for that service?
Well, we're contributing, not specifically to one thing, we're just contributing, and that's what we're renegotiating now, is additional contribution.
But, I also, I also feel they put us as a priority. They're down here first.
They do. Definitely.
You know, so, a little bit of that. If it, it's like, okay, they do the whole city, well, then they could put us anywhere on the list, but they are, they prioritize. When it comes to, you know, doing the street and stuff, that's different, but the sidewalks, I really, really think that's a perk that we get for the downtown.
Just, yeah, just hearing stories about when it was the property owner down here was, the snow was piled between cars and the parking spots, and then it was, it lasted there for a long time. So, I think the system works, and it is an enhanced service that the city provides, but it is kind of, where does the snow go? We have to actually get it all out of downtown.
That's why we should melt it.
What's that?
That's why we should melt it.
Right.
And that was the, probably the crux of the agreement and the discussions. And again, I was probably fairly new, but it's like enhanced services, and those were the things that were very difficult to define, so whoever's negotiating that now...
Watch the cost of...
Good luck. Those, those things are tough.
We're going to take less emphasis and more on contribution. Okay. Anything else on that? Motion to adjourn? Tyler?
Second.
Second to adjourn?